Are we doing cross country too? Okay, cool. I wish Lila would do cross country.
She's like, I don't know.
You know, keeping shape on those four. Four, they're like, I just wanted to stop that. My parents are very patient.
I know like a lot of kids, like I know, I don't know what our school is like. Maybe they go and like, oh my God, they go over there and see all that. And I'm there and I'm like, Clara, it's, you would be like.
He was kind of me, same old. But most of them are in the same hall, of course, it's. They were hard with the country and rain, always.
You know, I think she's afraid of the long distance. But she goes run, she runs like in the summer, she'll go like she's standing in gold like one on one. Like, well, it's nothing, so then you're old mom and I can like do, and I'm old. And you'd like intram.
On just the viewers.
It's just starting to be out.
Yeah. See, I think she'd be fine. I wish she just would've went in it, but you can't force some, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's serious.
Probably good.
Yeah, we should change whatever.
Well, and I think the other thing too is like, when I was kind of sent like things that, you know, I wish I would've done stuff like that. Herb, so getting in often for trouble, but I think part of it is like, I don't like things that were like really competitive with the ball. I just didn't like. And it's like, I think Lila's kind of like that for sure. It's just, she doesn't want to do this. She wants to run, you know, because you're, you're kind of, even though you're on a team, you're kind of still in your own.
Still an individual sport.
Yeah, you're not, people aren't touching you and shoving at you and it's like, because I'm like, I watched from basketball. I want to go, I mean, I was, I was almost like, don't touch my phone. You know, but not just like mom is sweet, it's like this. Yeah, that's okay.
So start the city council meeting for September 12th, 81 degrees. From seven P M, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Stand if you can.
The pledge. To do the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, please show Andrew. President. Jim Otis.
Here.
Mary Bailey.
Here.
Molly Ryan, who's absent. But can be here, here. City Administrator.
Here.
Art Bolson.
Here.
Scott Reyes, here. And Kim Neer, very, Pauline here. Did I get it right? That's right. Assistant Holly is here. Public Works, Boyneri. This is nobody here yet from the police department. Might not be enough tonight, so we hope. Um, Cora's here from A B A. Um, let's see who else is down here. And I'd like to welcome, uh, Whitney Kyle. First time here, so kind of get. If you're a little bad. Um, I think we're pretty well got everybody. After a part of it. So we'll go in with citizens comments. And, uh, tonight we have a special person here and, uh, we did tell her that we would, uh, do it right at the very beginning, and that is, um, Beth. Superintendent of Kenyon, Winmiko.
Yes. I'm so excited to be here. I didn't know I'd be quite so formal. I went to Long mango city council meeting last night. I miss your goat jokes, by the way. You know, I was an avid follower for a long time, so yeah, I think we need to get going on something again. That was really fun.
Thank you so much.
My name is Beth Eas and I'm your new Kenyon Long mango superintendent. I'm super excited to be here. Super excited to work with you. If there's anything we can do as a school and a city together. That's what I want to do. I want to create a, a great relationship with cities and schools. I mean, that's how you make both entities better all the time and we know that. So as things come along or if there's building projects or anything that, um, you know, you think you want to connect with me on, I'm, I'm very well versed in that. Um, super excited to say that we started the school year of twenty seven kids. And as you know, we've been declining enrollment, um, up until this year, and we tried to call all the homeschool kids back. We tried to connect with kids that had open enrolled in other districts and trying to get them back. We know that we have great communities and have a fabulous studio, so. That's kind of where we're at and your mayor and some of his friends have talked me into the color guard. I'm a veteran, twelve year army veteran. So I'm really excited to kind of get into that side of things in our communities as well. So, um, I look forward to anything you could throw my way. I want to say, but I can't. I have to get back up. We're really short volunteers, um, working the volleyball game tonight, so that's why I'm dressed like I'm working a volleyball game. That's where I'm at. So it was really nice to meet all of you and I will come back. I'd like to come to a lot of city council meetings. If you ever need me, you know where I'm at, you have my number, right? So.
Not at the moment, I don't.
All right.
Oh, I do for school.
I'm gonna leave my cell phone for you in case there's ever emergency or you can need.
Well, if you join the color guard, they will need personal number.
Yeah, see now, I don't know. I was at the football game and got signed up for like three different things. I don't know. It was great to meet Oliver. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on, uh, citizens comments? Like to? Have stuff.
Um, I'm sure as well. On behalf of the fascination, um, what I'm here representing.
Yeah, then we can move on to adopt the agenda. Is there any changes that are being made, Mark?
No.
Go ahead.
We need a motion.
Motion to adopt that agenda as is. We've made a second amendment.
I will second it.
Okay, motion has been made. That has been adopted agenda as it is. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye, aye.
Or opposed. Okay, next one, we can do, uh, consent agenda, approval of the minutes. And financial, we can do that all at one time if you wish.
I will make, make a motion for the approval of minutes and appointments.
I'll second that.
More questions on that? There's been a motion made, second. To approve the extended agenda, agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments. And financial, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I pass. Okay. Hey, presentations, public hearings, part mention, part provisions. First on the list is Randy Kyle. Would you? Yeah, please come on.
All right, so I will give the recap of the pool season of twenty twenty three. So, um, we talked a little bit at Park and Rec, um, and was asked to come here tonight to speak with you and, um, all in all, we had a really another good season for the pool. Um, it is kind of a hot spot, um, for the, for the summer for younger kids all the way up to, um, older adults. So, um, pool is such a great thing to have in this town and we'd like to keep it going. Um, this year we hired seventeen, um, lifeguards, seven of which were new, which is pretty awesome. Um, there's some older ones that will probably not be coming back next year, so, um, but still we'll have a great crew. Uh, we had a lot of responsible, um, kids and just we all got along and I just really enjoy working with, um, these players there. So, um, next year we'll probably need to have a new assistant manager, which I would hope that would be eighteen years older and plus, um, to help me out. Um, it's, it's pretty busy down there and I can't be down there all the time, so it'd be really great to have a responsible older teenager and or adult, um, down there. So that's kind of the new thing that I'll be working on this winter. Uh, I'll be getting a new job description, um, of how I'd like it and probably will get, um, like help wanted all by February and start hiring or, um, doing some, um, doing, uh, some interviews in March. So, um, just to recap of the year of the, uh, summer, the lessons, uh, private lessons were a huge hit. Um, the teachers were busy basically, um, with lessons from the very beginning of the summer till the very end. Um, we probably had five to eight private lessons per week. So that's a really busy, um, thing that we. Um, we did two sessions of swimming lessons, of which we had many families come from Hannibal, Northfield, and Rhode Island, Rhode Island, First Canyon. So they're using our pool. Um, those surrounding communities are using our pool quite a bit. Um, we had really, really awesome teachers and so that's why I come here. Uh, water aerobics, last one, just always a hit, um, and of many women, women and men utilize. For that. Um, something new we did this year, which I think is really cool is, um, two days a week, we had sensory friendly swim, um, when the pool wasn't open, so, um, people with special needs could come in for an hour and it was, you know, non-stimulating, you know, it was very quiet. Um, and a bunch of, well, I would say like five people utilized it quite a bit, um, almost all year. So I intend to do that next year as well and hopefully it can be better publicized. So, um, other than that, uh, last week, Mark Wayne and I got together and we discussed, uh, raising prices for next year to counter, um, the rising cost of running the pool and paying staff. So that's something we'll continue to talk about and, um, you know, if that's more clear for springtime, so. Other than that, we're, uh, coming back next year and, um, yeah, great.
Um, how, how, I'm sorry, um, yeah, how old are they? Fifteen, is that how they can be to go through the lifeguarding?
Yes, they have to be fifteen.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And sixteen for a teacher.
Okay.
Yep. Any other question?
I'll say thank you for all your work.
Yeah, wonderful.
Great job, Oliver.
I'd say the same thing. Thank you so much.
And the lifeguards are always, they're great.
They're just great.
They are great.
And maybe, um, I mean, they're just always, um, and people. And I can't say either, so.
All right, thank you, Brandy.
Yeah, thank you. Hey. Next on the left would be Cora. Um, we don't have any great city finances.
So, um, last week I had students from N S U here. Um, they are doing for a studio project, um, helping through some, uh, based, proposed plans for us to help in creating a budget and a process for our people park. Uh, so right now we're in the survey phase, which has gone out via the city website, Facebook. I have some copies here. Um, just so that we can kind of, figure out who we're marketing this to, um, come up with an idea and it'll help us have a few visual presentations. And it will be, um, visible at Harper treat. And so that's a big thing that I'm working on. We need to be great in helping with that. I just have meeting with them today. Um, so anyway, that's the bigger thing that's going on. Um, the grant that I'm submitting next month for, um, people part then. The other, um, stuff is, yeah, just the, um, the entrance sign, but there goes over that more on.
Have we had anybody reach out as far as helping volunteer for painting?
Of course. Well, I was gonna look at twenty five with that after I'll catch up with her. Um, in regards to if there's any volunteers or anyone that'd be interested, they reach out to, um, if there's any planning habitat to see if there's anyone that needs to be supported as an option. So.
Well, I have a, um, I was just thinking about this and I haven't talked about this, so I probably shouldn't say it's cities council meeting, but I have a kid that needs an Eagle Scout project. And when I, I read that and I was like, hmm, that might be, you know, a good one, because then all the Boy Scouts come and help them too, you know, so they work on different cases. But I don't, I would maybe have to talk to you about that, like, you know, just see how long it would take, you know, how much manpower you would need. I mean, he can't do that whole thing himself. Is it just all the outside?
We have to start with outside, wanted it also, but since it could be.
Later, just one step at a time and. Yeah, so that might be a good project for him. He's got to get one done before June, so.
The report kind of has to be done in December, so.
Okay. And there's other Boy Scouts too, you know, that need projects, so I could talk to them next time.
With N S U also, it's just focusing on, um, enhancing the exterior space. So, um, if we can do a walking down like West Conference down around their, one of their parks or, um, adding anything that would, um, you know, I guess for activities or a permit structure for shade. That's, they're gonna be doing it through the building itself. Aside from maybe removing some of that bricks and find some use for them to do. And this is, they're just helping us with the, with the planning process, that we can have an idea on fundraising and a targeted approach and how we're gonna budget for this. Uh, anyways, so in the future, maybe make it so that it's wheelchair accessible inside aside from that ramp. So that first door is not, and no favors or then bricks are not.
Right, what?
Thought is a thought. What we find.
Cora, can you just talk to a person, like, about a business part? Context, a couple of context, we have a one right now.
Yeah.
Based on the.
So, um, Paul, we're in the one with, um, Atlantic Distribution. We found the tip application process with him, um, connected him with the S V D C, um, as far as the funding goes for that. So, or if we have any funding stuff for that. And then, um, message I have out for Jeremy. Last name. He rents this, or leases a space in Northfield and his business is T G, it's just for manufacturing. So, um, he initially contacted Mark, so. Another one, um, he did have someone, reach out in regards to looking for a community to, um, lease a building in. And so it's something to consider, not right now, but in the future, it's the, I think probably center of their attempt to come up. Um, but someone not wanting to invest in a building themselves right now, but nothing one. It's a business fits the area.
We also had a resident who contacted me probably at least a month ago. Whom is kind of interested in putting a spec building up and leasing it. Um, but he doesn't want to design it. So we also, and I don't know how soon he did it. He didn't hear the, I think the person that did it was pretty silent.
Last. Yeah, thank you.
Hey, that, that off, all right. Next one, uh, if you're hearing, if you're hearing, like to, yeah, start off.
Um, so quick updates on the, uh, larger infrastructure projects, why not make a office free project. Um, contractor Hazelpin unexpectedly showed up on Friday. You might have noticed some color which has moved. Um, they started off this one up the work, uh, we're waiting on some final paperwork from them, but, uh, they may be doing their work. Um, and probably going to be another. Smelling up a friend. Uh, so moving in the right direction with that project. For a free tour project. Um, I'm the, as we. In the memo, expecting them to be starting on the fourth day, um, they did put back a couple of days expecting. Right now it'll start either tomorrow or Tuesday, um, but it's right up at the driveway. Um, you bear in mind property there, unless they get that grade in, it's all a devastation. Any questions on the.
Uh, when they're doing the boring, are they starting that up on Langford and Mark Street? And going down to the low station or are they gonna bore them down there and back up?
Uh, I have not discussed those details. I believe, my guess would be that they would start from the, uh, top side working down.
That's what I obviously.
This, okay. Um, okay, so that was it for the, um, the infrastructure projects. Um, next thing, um, requested to, uh, kind of bring up some considerations, um, regarding, uh, potential project that may be coming on, uh, down the pike. Um, as is noted in my letter with this trail connection. Um, this has come up a couple of times over the past couple of years. Um, what was requested from me in some of the early conversations with Cora, um, was, you know, how does the city kind of start moving in the direction of looking at that type of project, you know? Where would it make sense to put the trail? Um, you know, what, where exactly would that be located? What would connect that type of thing? Um, I guess when I had heard some of that, uh, I, I wanted to just bring up a couple of considerations that the city is actually serious about moving forward with this type of project. Um, trail projects are, uh, just based on my experience, they're pretty popular. A lot of people like trails. Um, almost nobody likes trail in their backyard. Um, and that's a very serious thing. They, they can actually be pretty controversial projects. Um, so if you do want to move forward with this type of project, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it's important that, um, you have, uh, your goals established. And what are your connection points? What type of user are you trying to serve? What's, you know, the appropriate type of, of surface on the trail, all these questions, you kind of have some of that stuff, you know, out of the way and established with your, with your early goals before you start looking at the details of exactly, where you want to put the trail or when you want to do it. Um, there's, uh, there's a number of different funding opportunities, um, for trail connections, you know, as has been discussed here. Um, but again, a, a lot of those funding opportunities really are dependent on, um, the type of trail that you want to put in, who you want to serve. Um, and a really big piece is how much planning you put into it. With any grant funding, uh, application, um, you're essentially telling the story to the grant administrator, uh, why it's important to your community. If there isn't any planning that's been done beforehand, well, almost all of them are competitive, it's probably just gonna get dusted, trash. Um, so, um, you know, like I said at the beginning, this is intended to kind of start the discussion, see what you guys think about this. Um, but kind of the, the preliminary recommendation with this would be, uh, to maybe form a committee, um, to talk more of these details. Um, and then figure out a process for how, um, how you'd like to move forward.
Yeah. I think it's good. Um, so would you, if we had like a committee, I mean, would that, would that be like separate from Parks and Rec? Do you like a separate?
Um, it could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Or it could be kind of under Park and Rec, because I think Park and Rec's gonna be, would be highly involved in something like this.
Yeah.
Um, whether it's the level of, you know, working at the ground level or whether it's the level of a committee being formed. And then it kind of, they would take those recommendations. Kind of, you know, look at them and decide whether they think they're good or bad or whatever, and then go to council. I guess that would have to be determined, but yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be park board also. Um, I think a lot of towns have formed separate communities, so committees that have done, they form separate committees, so.
And a big piece will be, it, it might be some, some extra time for those folks, um, for getting this public engagement. He's, I don't wanna say out of the way, but you want, you know, go through maybe a couple of rounds of that just to see what's the feel of the community.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be a very valuable part and something that could be done by volunteers for less cost.
You have, you've been involved in, uh, any startup on any of these programs?
Mm-hmm.
So you try.
In other communities you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. So you would probably be a good source. And, and creating a meeting and then having you be there to go some direction.
Yep.
And so forth.
Yep, I can help out in whatever capacity and, and for sure, you know, trying to establish this overall plan for those first couple of meetings, I'd be more than happy to.
And I know like this, I keep, um, yelling at you about this, so I would be more than happy to help in any way that I can, or, you know, whatever. If, you know, if Parks Rex does it, you know, I'll go, you know, I'd meet with them about it when, you know, I'd just, I'd be happy to be a part of it, because I just think it needs to happen.
Well, you were saying, both of you were saying, uh, more or less start a committee itself instead of Park and Rec to give it going and then maybe join later on, and that's what I am intending to do.
And realist, you could do it either way. If you feel like your, uh, uh, park board, um, is that, you know, the same group that would be on the trail committee? Well, there's probably not much of a need for establishing one, but if you feel like there's others that you want to bring in, maybe it would be appropriate.
What do you think? Because you're, you're kind of eating that.
I, I think that it would be good to have a separate committee for it just right now because of.
Okay.
The amount that we have and just not a full committee on their, on the Park and Rec. We're kind of short, some people, people moving and some not coming to the meeting. So I, I think a, a committee to start and then bring in the Park and Rec.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would be happy to also volunteer on.
Well, maybe you and I could meet or something.
Yeah, we can, we can set something up and I'm sure there's a, you know, other ones on the park committee that would, but it's just.
Yeah.
To throw the whole project at our group right now, I don't think it would be feasible for us.
And I know some other people that would be, I think are interested.
Yeah.
To other, other people.
I agree with what you're saying, and that, that's why I felt, you know, um, like, say like all of the different, uh, pieces on here that were brought up. On questions and so forth. I think that could probably be, begin to be answered by, uh, a source that is interested strictly in the fails for right now. Now, my question, I'm certainly in favor of it, always have been. And I believe most of the council or all of the council would feel the same way. How do we start by seven and eight and so forth going forward? Do we do that here or should we, how, how would you go about doing that?
Um, my thought would be to have park board start, you know, at maybe their next meeting. And then maybe you could come, Derek, to come.
Sure.
And then we'll set up the parameters for the committee. Um, and then, you know, if you know some people that are interested, um, I think then after that, we could set up meeting up, a separate meeting up for the day.
Yeah.
Just a thought. I, I don't think we would start this at the council level per se. But I think at the park board level started, I think it would be good.
Yeah, just tell them what we're up to and then, so they know.
Yes.
Okay.
And then they can, we can start having separate meetings with that committee when we get some people and, um, you know, maybe we can have the council adopt the committee and the members once we get that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So it gets pointy, huh?
Yeah.
When is the next meeting? Give you, I'm sure you do.
We had to change it. I think it's Monday, the.
Second.
Well, yeah.
The Monday before the normal meeting day, I think.
Yeah, the second.
October second.
October second at six P M.
And Derek, once something gets like outlined for the, like, you know, when you kind of get an idea, like, what do you think for a timeline? Like, is it two years? Is it ten years? Like, do you have like a ballpark, the timeframe?
There, yeah.
It just varies.
There's a. There's a. If we can answer a few questions, we can probably find the. If we can answer a few questions first, then we can find that.
Then you can find that out, and then, yeah, then my, then there's always the money and the grants and all of that.
You know, that ends up being a, a big piece of it. Like I said, there's, there's a ton of great grant uh, programs out there for this. Um. None of them are, you know, one hundred percent cost responsible, there's always going to be a local. Uh, cost shared.
Yeah.
Into that, and some of these trails, you know, I think it's fairly well-known, the areas that we're kind of talking about are potentially having something.
Sure.
Um, you know, there's, there's quite a distance in there.
Yeah.
Uh, trails aren't, uh. It isn't as simple as just clearing a couple of trees. But it's, it's, I mean, uh.
Right.
Uh, it gets complicated fairly quick, um, so.
So of the ones that you have been on, or, you know, seen come forth, what is the main surface that they've used? Are they doing all black carpet or are they?
No, it, uh, a lot of that depends on, on the use, I mean, the, the thing that you hear of the most with projects that get funded are shared use paths. Um, so that's uh, walk, bike, motorway, basically non-motorized, uh.
Um. What about e-bikes?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um. Most of those are paid, um, there's a lot of rules that go into those, um, I finished one up for. Uh, design one for Rochester that was almost ten years in the making.
That was what?
Almost ten years in the making for that.
That's right, or else.
Yeah.
Yeah, years.
Um, so it can, it can take some time.
Yeah.
But it, 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 it really depends on, you, you don't have to do it that. Um, you know, I'll give you an, another example, uh, City of Rushford had a smaller trail connection. Um, that we've been going after grant opportunities for the past five years and just always finish right below the funding line, right below the funding. Well, in that case, uh, um, we started talking more details with Public Works and we found out a way to build it. Um, uh, a lot of it with Public Works staff and their own equipment and some. Uh, good deals that they had cut with some local contractors and they built it themselves.
Oh.
Uh, for actually cheaper than what they would have even if they would have gotten.
Okay.
Um, so there's just, there's, there's a bunch of different ways that these projects can happen, it's just a matter of what are your, what are your goals, what you all write with, what you, who you wanna serve.
Or have you, if I have to do that?
No, it's just, as you mentioned with France, it's, there's a lot of things that have to be captured and do their best to be. Like city itself or fifteen or B D A, you can't just apply for it and, um, next week, maybe four or five. Um, to go with it, and so it's sort of why I'm looking to do things with people's hearts to add. Um, any recreation or walking on their, because that is maybe a, well, who are part of it that loves, but you can walk down there. Not great or beautiful, but it's still a path, and we have many, some time to. Just figuring out what we can better do. That.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say on that?
I don't, no, sounds like a reasonable plan, you need to start somewhere and you need to get the support to get going, so it makes sense. Council, are you got any further questions?
Um, I'll just maybe, keep me in, maybe the next meeting.
Yep, I'll send out an email and then I'll.
And I'll talk to people, see if I can. You know, rally up some.
So like, on a committee of that, this scale, what, how many would be a good number to? I mean, do we have twenty?
Let's, let's talk more details about that, I have some other ideas we can kind of talk about.
Okay, 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 good. Perfect.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Okay, uh, that's it for that item, uh, last one, um, is related to the community entrance signs, we've got a couple of. Action items related to this, um. So, uh. Recap is, it, this has been in discussion with the E D A for a couple of months, now is that correct?
I started working. Over, so getting it.
Okay.
Um, with you and based on, you know. Vision.
Okay, alright. So this is located on Highway sixty and fifty-six coming from the north there. Um, so, uh. Two things, um, for decision tonight, uh, got a couple of proposals for, uh, from sign companies to actually build one of these. Um, and then, uh, lastly, there's a res- uh, resolution, um, that's required from MinDOT. For placing any new signs within MinDOTs right away, um, they, uh, approve these through a limited use permit. Um, so the resolution just kind of goes into that permit and lets the state know that you're requesting this and, and. Get the proper approvals from the city in order to do that. Uh. So, uh, one of the attachments, uh, going back to the quotes, uh, did include, um, the list of quotes that have been received. Um, so. Got them from Anderson Memorial, Lewiston Monument, those are both, uh, like solid granite, uh, type of sign. Um, uh. The cost that is noted, that is noted in my, uh, uh, proposal or in my, uh, summary letter here, does not include. A block foundation, so I'd look at those as more of the higher cost options of what we've looked at so far, what, what, uh, Cora's looked at. Um. Last two, precision signs and Shad Tracy, um, low-cost option out of those to do, was from Shad Tracy. Uh, I will say that there are some final details, uh, associated with these, uh, sign designs that will more than likely increase the cost a little bit. Um, I guess, uh, we have, Margaret, I haven't talked a ton of details on this, but one thought that I did have on. On this one, the existing sign that's out there sits up probably four or five feet in the air. Um, this one, as it's currently designed, sits down a little bit or so, maybe makes sense to make it a little bit higher. Um, so, uh, I just say that to, uh, so you know that. Um, the costs associated with these would, uh, would likely change with the final design, but I do believe we have enough information to, uh. Make a decision on, you know, approving, uh. A local.
What is the longevity of, like, say this with this full stone? I mean, is that compared to the granite? I mean, is it gonna with old? The elements as good as solid piece of granite?
I, I don't know what the, what their warranty is on, on, uh, uh, on those, I mean, a lot of times they're not actually stone, it's a cement or concrete product. Uh, you know, they, did, did you get any information on it, Cora? Okay.
A lot of this full brick and full stone, though, if it's us, if it's a aggregate. Or a stone product, you know, it is gonna hold up a, a long time. You know, not to say that obviously granite is, you know, probably the most permanent thing you can use. Um, but I think a lot of these, and, you know, maybe Cora, you can get some more specific. Goes, I like what the materials are that they use, but a lot of the full materials are, you know, pretty solid, they're aggregate kind of thing, so it's more of a. That, you know, maybe in twenty years, thirty years, they start to kind of come apart. A little bit or, or wear with weather than it is. You know, the fact that the material's gonna just fail is. I think more of it is how well it's bonded and constructed than it is the material itself, because it's still basically rock.
Okay.
Be the same with that part of this, that's a combination of all of them.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Although we have one out there now that's come apart of. The original one, the piece that came.
This really isn't any different than you're putting up a building and it's pretty rare that you use the real stone. Um, for that exterior side of the material. They're sitting on. A steel frame and there's a foundation that it sits on as well, there's a lot of. Verify some of that if you'd like. So yeah, uh, I guess, uh, action items, um, if you guys are comfortable with moving forward, looking for a motion to approve. Uh, that, uh. A quote from Shad Tracy, um, and, um, if that is the case, also, uh, a motion approving. Limited use permit resolution, which I believe is point three dash one.
Why are you not? You look at Lewiston Monument, I mean, it looks kind of open, but they're between fourteen thousand five and twenty thousand five. Versus almost, and they did say that there's a possibility of changes even on the, the Shad, uh, Tracy sign.
Yeah, but that one had so much variability, it was, it was dependent upon the thickness of, uh, of that granite slab. So it went from four inches all the way up to eight inches, and the cost went up for the thicker slab, that was, that was the only reason for their variance. Where the other, um, Anderson Memorial had, had, uh, given just, you know, one, one thickness, which I don't believe they actually specified, but.
When you're speaking thickness, your talks are based this way?
No, thickness of the sign, so it's like the face of the signs right here, all thinking that.
Well. Why isn't that into the? Due to the. The agreement doesn't bid on the thickness of the, like, it is.
Um, these ones were requested more open-ended, um, they were just, um. Cora, maybe you can provide some more details on that, she's just asking for, you know, give us an example of a, of a community sign of roughly these dimensions. And then they provided some information with the understanding that we need to solidify some of those details with the final agreement.
It was just more of a demo question from them, to get a design or get a estimate, um, so that we knew. What we would work with, uh, and then kind of creating that vision for, with one that did surprise us, that they don't. Like, update that, which some are noted, um. And, um, anyways, so. Yeah, and it's. There's something that had been started, I think, prior to starting, so.
So we, you know, one thing we could do with this, um, now I just put a mark. Uh, what we think the signs look like, one change, I thought I put this in the packet. Oh, is it that square one?
This is the one that's cut out. Decision.
Yeah, okay.
There we go.
This is what we're talking, what we're, what, from, stop and recommend from a design. Um, it's similar to the other one you saw, which is the first one that we had shown you guys. You know, six or eight months ago, but. This one, um. Think from the sign companies and, you know, if it's flat, it's gonna be a better, better, you know, more long-lasting kind of design, so. One thing we could do is, um, we could come back next month with more information, I mean, I don't think we have to approve the actual. You know, sign tonight, we'd like to get the MinDOT approved, so we can get, get that back to them, so they can get it turned around.
And they need, and they need this approved with it, cause they want to know.
We, we will need the, uh. You know, as close to the final designs as possible, it's, it's, I don't think they really care so much about the details of what's included, it's about how tall is that, how big is it?
So they need, yeah, so what I'm saying is, do you, we wanted, does MinDOT have to know who we're gonna go with? No, okay.
This is what the design of the sign will be, I was freaking, come up with that. And I told you could go back to them and say, here's what we're looking at, if you wanna get a revised report.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we could, um, yeah, if, if you, if you do wanna see, uh, you know, numbers from, from two different companies, that's fine too, otherwise we could just. Approve, uh, um, if you wanted to approve something, kind of, approve one. God Tracy, the, you know, the appropriate company, and then we come back with an update on what the. Um, I'm not expecting it to be substantial. Then what we're looking at, uh, it's just kind of like a little bit of a.
Yeah, a little bit higher, I think.
Did they quote anywhere, um, like this, the bottom part where you have Rose Fest and then the dates where that's interchangeable? Did they give quotes as far as?
Yeah, there's.
For other.
Well, that, and that Anderson Memorial with that one, I read they're gonna be like, we don't know what you're talking about.
The, the granite ones, they can't do the interchangeable.
Right.
Okay, so how much are those gonna cost us to do that interchangeable? I mean, then. Don't have that, okay. But, so they can't do that with the granite?
No.
So.
Well, then that leaves that Lewiston out then.
Yeah.
They can, right? Cause we want it interchangeable?
Yeah, like the one that's up on the screen there has the, one of the two interchangeable. Um, I think the other one might have been a little bigger or something, or I don't remember the difference between the two interchangeable.
Yeah, and, I mean, really, if it's on the road out there, I don't really think it's, I mean, they do do stupid stuff, but.
Yeah.
That's pretty far-fetched. I, you don't, that you don't see them do too much stuff like that.
Well, there's another one in here, like, you know, it said Boulevard Roses, Had Rose. I just think we should get the resolution done this month. And then really start looking at what we're gonna do for our top building going forward.
Okay. That's, uh.
You wanna wait to see who we're gonna go with? You wanna look into it a bit more? Okay.
It comes with the decision, but I, I definitely feel that we gotta get this resolution done now. And then we can go forward next month, get a little more information on what we're looking at, and.
Yeah, like, these granite ones, if they could give us a design of what they.
Yeah.
What they would do.
Yeah, there will be, um. So take into consideration with these, um. When we're reaching out to a company and asking for, well, with a design, what we're asking them to do is to design something potentially for free.
Yes.
Uh, so that's, that's why, that's why you're not getting as much information.
Right.
Uh, now, some of these other ones, you know, that's probably. I've seen that type of sign in a lot of communities, so it's a little bit less effort, but that's one of the reasons. Why this is a little bit different approach than some others, but the other, the other route that you can go to is to have someone design. The entire sign with, you know, very precise specifications and then send that out for bids or quotes. Uh, but again, that's just gonna end up adding more cost.
So that, you, we're not gonna get much of a dip, different answer. From these guys, so maybe what we can do, if you're looking at it, like, what I like, what I would do is stalk them, like, you know, look at their company and see what signs they've made, what they have, cause. Yeah, cause what you're saying, you have to pay them, it's like you, we gotta pay you to design stuff, that's what you do, right? Same thing, so. Maybe like, look at these companies and, like, I like to look at what they did, you know, what did your work look like and what other towns have that work, you know, maybe that's what we need to do before we decide. You know? Because they're not gonna give us any more information, is what you're saying.
You guys wanna see, uh, specific changes with, with the sign design, uh, or are you looking at seeing like more, more quotes and more precise?
Well, I think we just want, like, you know, like, if you have, yeah, like, if you have, like, if I'm gonna pick somebody to. Like remodel my kitchen, okay? I would like, I just, well, I wanna stalk them on the computer, you know, like. And then maybe see what people said, you know, like, what did they say? Did they say they were, oh, these guys were great, and they did all this, and it wasn't a hassle, and then these people might be like, oh, you know. They measured everything horribly, you know, you just look at, you know, you, reviews, yeah, and all of that, and then look at what they've done, you know, pictures. Visuals.
I'm just thinking with this, with the granite, like this six-inch one at seventeen-five, would that be? A better option than going with the aluminum and vinyl letter?
With the granite, it, it's, i- if you want to explore the granite option, it's an entirely different cost. At least, think at least double the cost of a aluminum sign, so this twenty-three to twenty-five thousand, that would be just beginning. It would probably be sitting on a, a ten thousand dollar base. I mean, you'd be more into the probably forty or fifty thousand dollar range with that type of sign.
So the one from Lewiston is not with that thing, cause it, they have ins- since delivery and installation, I guess I was assuming that was coming with the. The foundation then, I know the first one said that they did.
Plus the foundation.
Okay.
Plus the foundation and, uh, the Anderson one, you know, it was literally for the piece of granite, not installed.
Okay.
Um, so again, it's, it's not all apples to apples, um, I guess, the intention with those quotes wasn't. That there's a specific request for a granite sign, it was just, hey, here's another idea for something a little different than these other two aluminum signs. But it seemed like the aluminum sign design. than these other two aluminum signs. But it seemed like the aluminum sign design got some.
Well, I think it's more cost efficient in some ways. And I think, you know, if you look at the whole brick kind of setup, if it's a like a normal full brick you see like on building or house, I mean, it's pretty solid stuff, you know?
Yeah, and no matter what, it's gonna look the same, it's gonna look the same whether you have it granite or not, like, it's gonna look.
Taken kind of from the website, so it is our design. But, you know, like that one says, it's hard to stand there. It would say Boulevard of Roses underneath Canyon there.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't show up right on the screen, but any sign's gonna say that. I mean, that's like the, you know?
Yeah, if it's gonna look the same, it doesn't matter. I mean, it, I mean, if we were rich, we're just not rich, you know? Rich people get to have granite signs.
The aluminum signs are gonna give you the advantage of color.
Yeah.
A lot better color.
Where you're, you're more relying on the contrast.
Vinyl.
Yeah, we're not in Dino, I guess.
You ever see anyone do these and put L E B signage at the bottom of those?
Fortunately, I am. Or maybe fortunately.
I'm wondering if that might be a nice option. We can change the message on the bottom. So if you want to put Boulevard of Roses or there's some other city event, people promote Farmer's Markets, this kind of stuff, is that even an option? People do that at all?
Um, I know at least I think the other option that, uh, Chad Tracy added in there was some lighting. Um, I didn't include that.
No, we, we sort of, right now, we're looking at the lighting as kind of later. Because basically KMUs gotta run, they gotta run electrical service underneath Highway sixty to get there. And it's gonna be kind of expensive. So what we're thinking of is adding solar lighting to this later. Let's just sell contained so that we don't have to worry about getting any, you know, any utility over there because it's an area that's not really near any electrical. It's gonna be very easy to get to.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could get solar lighting from, that's not the most expensive thing in the world. We could do that on our own.
That's what we're thinking. If we could just get this thing up, um, that would be great. And then we'll look at that for next year or, you know, we'll just kind of see what we.
Obviously, the lights that shine on the sign. Internal light.
Yes.
They may have to modify the sign.
Yeah.
He's talking something, he could change the message down towards the bottoms. If you want to put Boulevard of Roses or you wanted to put Rose Fest, Farmer's Market, some other Highway sixties closed, the Smell Mark or whatever.
Yeah, Cora will, will look into that. My only concern with that will be that it doesn't take away from the sign itself. When you have a stationary placard underneath and you look at it, that's one thing, but when you have the sign that rotates, my only thing that will be that it's not gonna be too much, you know what I'm saying?
Doesn't have to rotate to be the foot.
Well, you know, I mean, yeah, that's true. So, yeah, stationary.
Okay, so do you want to look into the things a little bit more? Should we just vote on the other deal?
Why was the cave black? How would that possibly red?
Well, we can look into that. Um, I don't know if that's how the website is. But it's based on the kind of design from the website that's started when we met with these companies and.
That's why I think we should find out a little bit more.
Yeah, so maybe we put it down red.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they can do red. I mean, it's just a matter of.
I'm just wondering if there's a flag.
And we'll need a mark like this of it red. And we can bring that back.
Okay.
And then we'll try to get some examples of some of the other signs that they've done and also try to, we'll try to remember to mail those two guys and go and look at some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can just go book them up online. I do this kind of prep all the time. Yeah, just look on there. If you're curious. Yeah, drive by, yeah, you, yeah, or a town where you know they did one, yeah. Okay, well, well, should we make a motion to, just run out to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty? Okay, I'm making a motion.
I'll second it.
If not, there hasn't been a motion made. Second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty entering into limited use agreement with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation. All of those in favor of the motions, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those good capacities, okay? Now, can we go back a little bit on the community sign that we're gonna just, conversation wise, you're gonna look into it?
Yeah, we'll give them to bring more information back for, yes.
Uh, meaning you're not COVID.
Yeah, well, we'll.
Now, under this, there's a statement further say, um, how long is that permit good for?
I believe it's a ten, it's, it's ten years, um, uh, then there's a renewal period. I don't think, I think you actually have to notify them. It just stands.
But, okay, we're backing this up before you actually start construction. They approve, approve the, the, the location now. So let's say it takes us two months to get it going.
I'm not actually going, we're just getting the resolution out of the way. I'm not submitting it until we have a final sign design.
Okay, so, okay.
Just in that way. They, they want to see what the final sign design looks like. I don't, I don't want them reaching out after we get approved.
He's just trying to put rocks in the bucket.
A different sign.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want anybody squirrely like that, so.
Put rocks in the bucket.
So then in other words, nothing is gonna happen until we actually make up our minds as to what we're gonna do for this time. Okay, understand now.
But.
Okay, I gather that's it for individuals.
Thank you, Derek. And thank you for putting the trail thing on the agenda.
What can go on with they don't?
You don't have anything to say? Well, we'll, we'll have something else in the business.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Okay, good.
Okay. Well, then, uh, we can go on then. All business, which is KMU or City KMU compensation study, Mark, do you wish to, uh?
Um, so there's, uh, the city, uh, received two quotes. I was trying to get a couple more, but I just couldn't get them to respond. So the two quotes are both in the packets. They're from, uh, Yorkland Compensation Consulting and from Abdo. Um, there's a pretty large price difference between the two studies. Um, Yorkland, um, I think is done, you know, based on their references, they've done quite a few of these. They've done more school districts, but they've also done, um, there's at least one, they've done cities and counties both and school districts. So I tend to think that they would, you know, do a good job. Um, you know, just looking at the price, I just don't know if, based on the experience and based on the price, if we would, if we could justify going with.
Is this something we have to do?
No, no, it's not. It's, it's kind of just something that I've been requested of.
Oh.
You know, KMU was talking about it. That's really where it's come from more.
Oh, they want you to do it.
We have to do the whole works.
Like, because I mean, you know, because I'm just pinching pennies, like, I'm like, can't you, again, can't you just stalk other places? And I mean, I can get it and maybe this, I'm sure this is way more comprehensive than us just, but can't, I mean, can't you just look at? Because it's like public knowledge, right? Like what another? I don't know. Do you have to do this? I don't, I don't know. Do you have to do these studies?
I think it's wise to do it.
Do you think it's wise to do it?
If you're spending the taxpayers' money, if the study says this division really should get paid this compared to other cities and so forth, I think it's easier for them to swallow by saying.
We did a study, that study's like ten grand.
Yeah, Yorkland's, um, pricing, I think is really good. I thought it was gonna be a lot more than that, so.
Okay.
Quite a difference between the other one.
Lot of money. I'm like, can you just look it up online? Free?
Go that direction and I'll kind of just confirm a couple of things again, but, um, yeah, I think for what they're talking about, I think, you know? And the proposals they gave, both firms gave us for, to look at compensation levels, you know, they'll look at job descriptions, not so much to redo them, but just to help guide them when they do the compensation comparison or the position comparison. We're gonna have them look at both similar sized communities and then area comparables, um, to us even if they're bigger entities or companies or whatever they're comparing. Like with electric, they're gonna be looking at both municipal electric, I think there's three things, municipal electric cooperatives and investor owned or private like Excel, um.
And they just look at like people in our area?
Yeah, they'll also look at comparable cities, like if they have municipal electrics like, um, Janesville, um, Blooming Prairie, those are a couple that come to mind that are similar population to us. So they'll also look at those too.
Okay.
And they'll look at, like, could you cooperative and Excel Energy and Steel Sika.
Couldn't we do that? Couldn't we do that and save like ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, here's the.
I don't know. I'm just wondering. It just seems like a lot of money. What is it?
This is impartial. If we do it, it's not impartial.
Okay.
If I do it and then I come back and say, okay, here's what I found. I mean, this is, there is quite a bit of work involved with this. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
And KMU's gonna pay a portion of this, so it's not all gonna be the city, but, um,
Okay.
So I'm not gonna have a look at benefits because I think our benefits are good and I don't think we need to, you know, compare those. And plus that's gonna add more costs to the study, but I think it comes down to wages.
When we're on the personnel committee, when we were, you know, looking at hiring and so forth and, uh, with the chief, these are things that were brought in, but again, we weren't, uh, we had to more or less take what other people had to say, where this way we do have at least something that we can look at and say, okay, we're within this parameter, you know, guidelines
Okay.
of, uh, of it going, yes, I, I realize what you're saying, Mary.
Right.
About saving the money. I agree with you.
Not that I don't want everybody to have, but I mean, and yes, I know.
But, uh.
Well, this is a good way to make money. I should be working for these people. I, geez, that's a lot of money for that.
I agree with you, but I do think that it is, uh, personally, I think it's well worth.
All right.
While for at least to get us into, we've had so many changes in the last two years.
Yeah, no, I.
That has been drastic.
Yeah.
And that, um, you know, and people do say, well, I can make twenty-nine for an hour over here.
Right, yeah.
Okay, what's the cost of living over there? What is this here? You know, what, what's it give and takes staying here and versus other communities of the same size? This is what they will be able to determine.
And they'll have it all pretty on a spreadsheet. Yeah, okay, got it.
That's all I have to say.
Still a lot of money for that, but that's cool. That's cool, I get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the way it goes.
Yeah, good. Okay, fair enough.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve.
We have. Here we have, we have to have a motion.
Yeah.
To approve, um, Yorkland, Yorkland, Compensation Consulting for the compensation study.
Okay, more discussion about it. Okay, there has been a motion made second for the City KMU compensation study and it would be both of them would be the one that we're, uh, using. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Ayes or nays? Okay. Continue on then with any other things that came up? I don't believe.
No, without.
Do you want to jump on? Okay, under new business, uh, Lacy's Kitchen and Cocktail Liquor License, renew them.
All right, we just need to make a motion for that? Okay, I will make motion to renew, um, Lacy's Kitchen and Cocktail Liquor License.
I'll second it.
Motion been made, then a second for Lacy's Kitchen and Cocktail Liquor License renewed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passed. Okay, item B. Pro purchase of a forty-four steel storage container. And this will go for Public Works Department. And Wayne, if you'd like to just speak out a little bit, that's okay.
So we're looking at a cost factor, the way that this is storage. Top of the bowl. I noticed these containers have been, um, that parents last auction. We kind of talked about a little bit and kind of came up with a price. I ended up calling the company that we got it paid for for a little bit in the library. I got a price from them. Um, so we bid on it at the auction and I let it go. We ended up getting it cheaper from the company that we got it out of them from. Uh, this one's got the floor of horse, it's on it, actually topped the track date. The whole side will open up.
You wish to tell them what you're gonna use it for?
For the, like, skate roller attachments. But, could you put on like, uh, maybe like the most best plan saying? Something like that. There's some of this stuff in the shop, you can just put it through the shop. But it's still weather tight, um, whether, are the goals.
Cheaper than a new garage. Way cheaper than a new garage. Yeah, that's really good. Right.
And the other one is still orange. The other artists are still orange, like.
I'm looking to be positive. I could just see those matching at some point that I think would look nice.
The, the one that we're getting isn't used once, so it just came from forever. And I have no idea what.
I know, that's why I just, if we could get them to match at some point, I think that would look in charge.
Hey. Do we?
Thank you for looking for them.
Here, we need a motion on that. I'll make that motion anyway. On the approval of the forty-four steel storage container.
I will second it.
Okay. Any more questions? Not, then go down it. Motion has been made, second. Through the purchase of a forty-four steel storage container for Public Works. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I got your container. Okay, item C. This lot, lot split request. That comes by CMS.
Yeah, you can jump in. Uh, and Mark and I discussed this and looked at the materials provided, um, Dave Rapp's best predictive survey in there. Uh, we have done these in the past. Sometimes they are run through the planning commission. Not sure this needs to be it. It looks like pretty straightforward. And based on that, Mark and I put together a resolution that you should have available. Uh, I know it's on granite, that's what he said. So it'd be recommended you adopt the resolution. The resolution will utilize, file this at the colony that chose the city council as a proof of settlement. So it's recommended you go over the resolution and it's very important, so.
I'll make that motion.
The planning commission does have that.
It don't need to be all that tall.
Right, okay.
So, man.
Yeah, okay.
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made, second for resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. Poserizing minor substation subdivision and lot combination CMS. That's it, okay? All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Ayes or nays? Okay, item number D. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one adopting the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget and let it be. This one I played, Mark, he's like, hey.
Um, so there was a council work session on August sixth, September sixth, sorry, and last week. Um, so we discussed, I've met with three of the departments that have what we call levy funded budgets. Um, and so basically what has to be adopted for the end of this month is. And so basically, what has to be adopted before the end of this month is. The, the levy, the maximum levy has to be adopted by the council by the end of September. Um, so basically, staff had recommended. Um. Actually, seven point two percent, but we had talked also about eight percent, so what? The, at the work session was, the consensus of those present was eight percent is a. Maximum, and then, um, maybe we can work, try to work back from that a little bit. Um, you also have some other support. Um, information in the packet, including, um, the, the actual revenue and expenditure budgets. And the estimated impact on certain types of properties as far as an increase goes. Um, I think we still have. This year, uh, for payable twenty-four, we'll have. Some rest of doing what I call residual inflationary increases in real estate in the city, or in all of the county and all over the country rather. Um, which is gonna eat some of these increases up as far as what individual property owners will see. Um, so that does, I think, help. Push in, you know, the increases because, um, these increases are definitely not straight up as far as. You know, eight percent or. Seven percent or whatever, so. Anyway. I don't know if there's any question. I know a couple of you were gone, weren't at the meeting, so I don't know if you have any questions on anything.
And the only two that were here was Kim and myself, only as going for it, but, uh. I think it was discussed quite clearly and thoroughly.
And we talked about this before too, in other meetings, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a lot of inflation.
Yeah, cause I think it was six, wasn't it like six point seven or something we talked about before?
So that doesn't, fortunately, all cities, um, are, are looking down the barrel of the same. Kind of impact on their, as they do their budget planning. Um, you know, one of me, the one I believe was about nine percent.
Oh.
Fairable, I heard it was like ten percent. I, I know, I'm not saying that's good, but I'm just saying there's other cities I know that are looking at larger increases.
Than they thought before things got crazy? Um.
Everybody, everybody's got higher levies, yeah, and, and Mark's correct, um, um, standpoint of variable, it's. It's proposed higher, there are working on cutting things, that's what everybody's doing. This is your initial setting, starting point, you can't increase it, but you can turn it over.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's.
And that's unfair, I think.
Okay. Any other discussion otherwise, I can make that motion to. For resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, in the second on that.
I will second it.
Has been made, then in second. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, adopting the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget and levy. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Ayes, ahs. Okay, seventeen percent.
Oh, good, thank you. Um, we also need to set as part of this, the truth and taxation meeting. And we're talking about doing it, um, the first Tuesday of December.
Oh, yes, okay.
Which should be December fifth. Yes. Um, at six. Or are we doing it at six thirty, six thirty? Cause we have the fire department meeting at six. And then this meeting would be six thirty. This is the required meeting that. Cities and counties. Agents have to have to discuss their budget. Um, it used to be a public hearing, but it's not, now it's just a meeting, but it's a standard. Same thing.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah, so.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that. Just, uh, how would we do that? Label it?
Motion for, um, the truth of taxation meeting.
Okay.
Tuesday, December fifth, six thirty.
Motion has been made, second for a true, that's.
With the taxation.
Taxation meeting, and that'll be December the sixth. Fifth, I'm sorry, at six thirty, here at City Hall. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ahs. Okay, then we can go on to item book E. Prove order and purchase of John Deere six twenty-four P, front end loader. Again, Wayne will bring you up. I know you have.
Yes, it's in their package, yep.
So, we're finally looking at replacing our front end board. We abandoned it. Cause the deal's gonna go bad, we've retired us and lost about health on that project. Um, there's one there, it's just. It's one, it's our main workforce, it's replaced, sorry equipment. Right, so who could have came up, our trading day actually came up a little bit from last year.
Actually, good, good trade in.
Um, this would come with a new bucket. You have to sell our, the bucket, so if we did sell it, we have to buy a new bucket for the old one, so. We'll keep the new bucket, and then reuse all of the current attachments, so it'd be the same ball, the same snow bucket, California. All that would be the same.
Is this the same size for putting it in a garage? How's that?
It's one click bigger, but it actually be the same one that the other guy has.
So it's a little fit?
It just has a, kind of four inch higher lifting capacity than the old one. At that point.
And do they switch on our radio and stuff for us and light or how does that work?
Oh, the lights all blue. Uh, yeah, the lights, there is a one light in my, uh, you can transfer some of that stuff, there you want to plug in then. And then. Um, if we order it now, state bid's still current, so if we waited till first of the year. State bid would probably close our people off. And we're looking at five months old, so we won't even touch this thing until after the season. Because we're gonna have to rework my thoughts a little bit on it to get that followed up. So that's just working with one of the mechanics for me to do the program.
So, the way this is work is we, the council approves it, it will be ordered. It will not come until twenty-four, then in twenty-four, we would pay for it when it comes. Uh, I would bring a lease proposal to the council, because we would have a recommend leasing this. And then the first payment would actually be due until twenty-five, so this is gonna impact extra budget.
Well, you gotta have it, right? You just gotta have it. Then we just, then you just gotta have it, so.
We need something on laughing.
Yeah. All right.
This machine gets used daily.
Yeah.
Does get used.
Literally, and we're snowing, flowing.
And we need you to get our snow. We need you to get our snow.
And I do know that, that, uh, Wayne has kept me pretty well informed the last two years, so this isn't something that. Just popped up gradually, then to the point of where it does need replacement now, or. We're gonna start seeing some big bills, and then the value of it still.
Right.
Will go down, so I'm saying this year, yes, it's a lot of money. Uh, totally agree, but, uh, it's something that, um, that. The Public Works Department definitely does need and needs enough.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the order and purchase of the John Deere six two four P front end loader.
Okay, I'll second that one then.
Okay.
Cause I do know that it's needed. Any more discussion on that? If not, uh, motion has been made, second to approve the order and purchase of a John Deere. Six twenty-four P front end loader. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close? Ayes, ahs. Okay, then we can go on then with other business scheduled and upcoming meeting. Which will be the KMU meeting will be Tuesday, September the nineteenth, at four P M. Our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, October the tenth, at seven P M. And as long as we're at it, December the fifth, six thirty, the fire department also and, uh, tax, truth of tax. Uh, may be held at that time. That's it on that. Council and staff, general comments? And, uh, Heather, we'll start with you, Lee.
Um. I wanna thank Wayne and crew. I can tell you from working alongside him and others in the city that. I'm glad we're doing the case study, it's, it's due. Um, we're gonna see this coming, and then maybe can be compensated accordingly, where there's good staff. To replace someone like Wayne, chief or library director, KMU. And that is gonna cost us more in the long run, so I'm glad to see us doing this. A long way since high school. Thank you for all the work. You cut me in the loop on stuff. Break down some of those other work.
Yeah.
I have nothing tonight.
How about you, Mary?
Um, I'm happy we're working on trails. That's it.
I gotta say, I think we had a heck of a roast cast. Good one. You know, there's a lot of people right here, Lee, you with the caution.
Thank you.
Wayne, all of the hours that you guys put in, your crew. Um, we also have with Park and Racks, Kim. Um, I gotta add that too, Mark, you were in on it, involved into it, Derek, I think you got some part into it. Rings was on call. So, I think it's good, and I'm glad to see that, uh, we're gonna move forward on this trails. Anyway, I am interested in myself, and I do think that if we should, um. Try to put it on a fast burner and get it moving. This is one of the things that, uh. You know, people have asked, and especially some of the realtors here in town, you know, have people that are coming in and ask. What do you have for recreation or something? I do believe that would be a.
I have nothing to thank you.
How about you?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Um, just like to welcome Whitney again, I love, thank you for coming. That's something that I should have said to you when you came here last week. Thank you for your service. She's also a veteran.
I see you.
Gonna get roped into stuff now.
We are recruiting ladies, if we do have. One already that's very active, but she's only been in a couple of months, she's stepping up to the plate. And then if we have, um. Um, Beth. And the way it sounds, she's gonna enjoy it. But we'd certainly like to introduce and invite you to the campaign color doctor. I'll talk to you after, if you got a good one. Well, Wayne, how about you? Are you a client? And how about this funny lady over there in the corner? I know she never says anything at all, but she does have. Whitney, would you like to say something? You're part of this group.
I am hoping that you're on that. Something important, important with Friday, so it's fine.
Okay.
So, that'll be done on Friday, and have a couple days to spend in Chinese, probably. You're on Wednesday. I'm excited.
We're excited for her.
Excited and expecting. Really. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finally get to meet you last time I talked to you, I think you're in Arizona.
Well. I won't see you Wednesday either, cause I'll be in California. So, okay, uh, council and general staff comments, we've gone through that, how about it in German?
Make a motion to a adjourn. I'll second it.
Okay, well, it's been named, it, you've adjourned to me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Ayes, ahs.
So the fireman meeting on December fifth and sixth, is that? Are we asked to come to that? Is that the same? Month of one, okay.